And good evening and welcome to the September 13th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us and we're glad to have those that are at home watching from TV. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand. We have six of our wonderful students to lead us in our pledge tonight. Keaton Wyatt and also Kingston Riley from Black Fox and from Bradley, Anthony Rivera, Sophia Rivera, Victoria Rivera, and also Ariana Rivera. We're glad to have you with us, young people, as you lead us in our pledge followed by our moment of silence.
(Singing) I live in the United States of America and it's to the Republicans where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
And there are moments of silence. Our members of the board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And there are none. Thank you. I want to take just a minute to recognize our two newest board members, Barbara Long and Karen Dodd. We're glad to have both of you ladies with us and returning Amanda Moore. We're glad to have all three of you. And we're also glad to have representatives in the delegation from Leadership Rutherford tonight. Thank you and welcome to our meeting. All right.
All right.
Ms. Attorney?
Good evening, Board. According to Board Policy 1.200 and Tennessee Code Annotated 49-2-202(c)(2) in Section 25-6 of the Murfreesboro City Code, board officers are to be elected annually. The state statute mandates that the board only elect a board chair. However, Board Policy 1.200 mandates that the board elect a board chair and vice chair. The term for the officers to be elected would be from November 1st, 2022, to October 31st, 2023. Nominations for board chair will be given, followed by a roll call for votes, and then nominations will be taken for vice chair with a roll call to follow. A majority of the entire board, not just those present, which is the entire board, which is four votes, is necessary for one to be voted into office. Board officers cannot be elected by acclamation and we have to take a roll call vote. After nominations have been made and seconded, Mrs. Van Cleve will call your name and you should state the name of the nominee you were voting for. Please remember, it takes four votes for a member to be elected. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for board chair. Mr. Settles?
I'd like to nominate Butch Campbell.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Richardson. Are there any other nominations for board chair? Seeing no more, Mrs. Van Cleve, will you call the roll for the election for board chair?
Mr. Ballard.
Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Dodd.
Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Long.
Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Moore.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Butch Campbell.
Mr. Settles.
Mr. Campbell.
And Mr. Campbell.
I guess Mr. Campbell.
So that's seven votes for Mr. Campbell. So Mr. Butch Campbell is the board chair.
Thank you. I appreciate the confidence that the board puts into me and I enjoy working with you very much. This is a wonderful board, second to none, I think, anywhere close around. And I appreciate your confidence and we will work together again for another year.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair. Now, I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair. Mr. Settles?
I'd like to nominate Jimmy Leo Richardson, if you please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Ballard first. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hey, seeing none, Mrs. Van Cleve, will you call the roll for the vice chair election?
Mr. Ballard.
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Dodd.
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Long.
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Moore.
Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Settles.
Uh, Mr. Richardson.
And Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Richardson.
That's seven votes for Mr. Richardson as vice chair. So, congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Board, thank you for your confidence. Have a heart full of gratitude and humility. Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you.
Absolutely.
Communication? I'm sorry.
I said, turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Communication. Ms. Trail?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome, Ms. Long and Ms. Dodd. Glad to have you. Our communications are very short today. We want to say congratulations to Shay Hutcheson. Shay is the Case in Lane STEM teacher. She has been accepted into the TSIN inaugural Innovative Leaders Institute for Instructional Coaches. That is a full mouthful. The new cohort focuses on increasing capacity in those who support instruction at the school level. So, we appreciate her serving on that state board. Also, congratulations to Dr. Heather Knox. Dr. Knox recently joined the Board of the Tennessee Association for Gifted as their treasurer. So, once again, Murfreesboro City school teachers are on those boards and representing as well. Mitchell Nielsen Primary would once again like to thank the folks at Parks Realty for their generous donation of teacher supplies. Parks is a great supporter of Mitchell Nielsen. And then finally, on behalf of the City Schools Foundation, I just want to thank you all for your participation in the 9/11 Heroes Run/Back to School Dash. You either ran, volunteered, or sent me notes of support and I appreciate all of that. We ended up with 573 people participating on a very rainy morning and 120 volunteers. Our goal was 600. So, I think the fact that we got that close when it was raining so bad was really great. So, thank you all for that support. And we'll give a foundation update a little bit later, once we get the financials and everything. And that is all of your communications. I do want to say this thing, welcome Leadership Rutherford. We're glad that you chose Murfreesboro City Schools Board Meeting. So, I know they get lots of choices and it's gonna be a fun board meeting.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Dr. Duke?
Good evening, Board. And again, congratulations, Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, or soon to be Mr. Vice Chair. Congratulations on that. I am so excited tonight to present our first Best of MCS recognition for this school year. Tonight, we are honoring an individual who works day in and day out to make sure not only our students in our school system have all they need to be successful, but she serves as a liaison to our families so that they have all they need to be able to help their children succeed. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Rana DeJani to join me at the podium. Ms. DeJani is one of our family outreach coordinators. In her role, she works specifically with our Arabic-speaking families in all 13 of our schools. Ultimately, she serves as a connection point between our schools and the families of the children that we serve. Her consistent and ongoing service to the Murfreesboro City Schools community helps to ensure every family can truly engage in their child's education and can be an active part of the school community. Our non-native English-speaking parents have this connection because Rana does more than just share information with our families. She advocates, she educates, and she serves with all of her heart. Perhaps one of her coworkers said it best when they told me that she is the octopus of outreach because her arms go in many directions all the time. And every time she does it, you will always see her doing it with a positive attitude and a smile on her face. This is her 19th year working in MCS. She was hired as a part-time role in 2013 before going full-time in 2019. When asked to describe Rana and her work, her coworkers told us that she truly cares for families in a way that makes them feel at ease. She is always there to help and support teachers and administration in engaging our families, no matter the need. Finally, they told us that Rana is known for going the extra mile for anyone who needs it. Now, personally, as someone who has had the opportunity to see Rana work myself in a variety of different roles, I cannot agree with these statements more. She is truly a vital part of our MCS team and I can think of no one who represents the Best of MCS better. So, congratulations, Rana. We are so proud to present this to you.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you so much. Your words are amazing, Dr. Duke. I don't see myself, like how he described me, I just see myself loving my job and doing what I need to do. I love working with families. I love helping them. And I love making them feel welcome, included, and definitely, this gives me so much satisfaction and I think that's why I do my job. I want to thank you so much for your continuous support and for believing in the whole child and in all the supports that the student and their families need. Thank you so much.
Members of the board, we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment about the consent items? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Action items, okay. Board Policy 1.105.
Thank you again, Board and Mr. Chair. Tonight, we are recommending a policy revision to Policy 1.105 as part of our annual review of policies. 1.105 outlines the board's legislative involvement. This amendment removes a reference to the National School Board Association because the TSBA Board of Directors voted not to renew its membership with NSBA on June 5th of 2021.
Do we have a motion to approve Policy 1.105?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Settles?
I was wondering if they're gonna, if we put the new group that they're affiliated with, and I read that the other day, I was reading up on it. Is that gonna be, I don't think it, it didn't name the new group. Went out with the National School Boards Association. Just other concern groups? Okay.
Ms. Moore?
Yes, I had a similar question to David because, oh wait, this is actually a different one that I was thinking of. Never mind. I'll bring up my point in the next one.
Okay.
That had involved NSBA.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting 1.105, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I say none. Thank you. 1.203.
Yes, sir. Policy 1.203 governs the orientation process for newly-elected board members. This amendment changes the language regarding when new board member orientation occurs to align with current practice and ensure compliance with the state's Open Meetings Act.
Good, thank you. We have a motion to approve Policy 1.203.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Now, any question or comment?
No.
None? Okay.
It'll come later. Just building up some suspense.
Even us on the edge of our seats.
I know. It's gonna be thrilling.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 1.204.
Yes, sir. Policy 1.204 outlines the development opportunities for the board. This amendment removes a reference to the National School Board Association because the TSBA Board of Directors voted not to renew its membership with the NSBA on June 5th of 2021.
We have a motion to approve Policy 1.204.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Now, a question or comment? Ms. Moore?
It's me. Surprise. When I looked at this, I just saw, I understand we have to delete NSBA, but by doing so, we haven't really left room for other possible national or regional conferences, which I think is what you're getting at, Mr. Settles, with the new group that TSBA has aligned with. So, I would move that we amend this to add some sort of language to leave open the possibility of conferences, workshops, conventions held by the state, national, or other regional groups, something like that, a little broader just because right now, we've closed ourselves out of those.
Absolutely.
All right, that can be done, right, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, we can make those amendments for second reading.
Okay. Any other question or comment? All right, all in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. I'm gonna interrupt and change just for a second. Mr. Jimmy Garland is here with TSBA and Jimmy, come forth. Special presentation tonight and we want to appreciate you being here. I know the traffic was heavy.
Yeah, I'd like first to apologize to each of you for being late. I thought I was leaving out on time and found out that the traffic said that I didn't leave on time. But on behalf of TSBA, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize your great work. Thank you, Chairman Cameron, members of the board, and Superintendent Duke. It is my privilege to be here tonight to present you with the TSB Board, TSBA Board of Distinction Award. This award is one of TSB's most prestigious awards. I commend your board for meeting the requirements in four key areas: planning, policy, promotion, and board development. As you know, the requirements are extensive and not every board qualifies as a board of distinction. However, your board is among those select few. On behalf of the Tennessee School Board Association, I am proud to be present, proud to present the Board of Distinction Award to the Murfreesboro Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much. Thank you for tolerating my talk.
Oh, I understand.
Turn that around and let's get Ms. Trail. Let's do this. I'd like a copy of that. Okay, Ms. Trail will send you a copy of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let y'all look at it. You can pass it down after you finish. He came all the way from Clarksville, didn't he?
Yeah.
Isn't that where he lived?
Yeah, Clarksville.
Okay. All right, sir. Policy 1.701, school district planning.
Yes, sir. Policy 1.701, school district planning articulates the long-term planning of the school district. Although this is not a new policy, the prior version of the policy only stated that the board would create a plan in accordance with a now repealed state Board of Education rule. This more detailed amended version adopts language recommended by TSBA and outlines how the district will create its long-term plan.
Do we have a motion to approve Policy 1.701?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Dodd, yes. Okay, I'm sure you said this.
You're not used to me being on.
Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, 5.1061.
Yes, sir. At the August 23rd board meeting, the board approved on first reading this policy, which outlines the employment of retired teachers. We are presenting this amendment on second reading to clarify when a retiree is and is not eligible to receive career ladder as a retired teacher. And this is based on guidance we have most recently received from the State Department of Education after the first reading. So, we are recommending approval of adding the clarification language around career ladder.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move for approval.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Now, question or comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 6.203.
Yes, sir. Our final policy revision tonight is 6.203, which governs the school admission process. This amendment to the policy incorporates language found in other board policies on enrollment. It clarifies that in the case of a rezoning, students attending on an out-of-city or out-of-county waiver could apply to other open-zone schools, but the new zoning enacted by the board would supersede any existing waivers. And we are recommending approval.
All right. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Now, any question or comment? Mr. Settles?
That one kind of hurt my brain a little bit, Trey. Can you break it just a little bit more?
Yes, sir.
I had a nap earlier, didn't it?
That's okay. So, when we, when a family comes into Murfreesboro City on a zone waiver, our current policy makes it clear that once they're in the city schools on a waiver, they can continue to stay on a waiver in the city schools as long as they meet the requirements of the waiver, which is regarding attendance and transportation and things like that. What this clarifies is that if we have to rezone a school similarly to what we did this year, that students who may be on a zone waiver who don't meet the grandfathering option, although they would not be able to stay at that school, the new zoning would overrule it, we would allow them to apply for a zone waiver at any other open MCS school so they could stay in the system.
Okay. So, was this partially as a result of some of that we'll be experiencing? I know that rezoning that we just kind of went through and we didn't think we would have to, but we did because unfortunately, Murfreesboro is one of those places everybody wants to move to and love.
That's right.
Okay.
And I will say, this language is actually, we actually added this language to several policies last year through the annual review process. We were looking at this policy and this, the language was left out of this specific policy. So, now it puts all the policies in line.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Any other question or comment? If not, all in favor of Policy 6.203, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I say none. Thank you. All right, approval of director's evaluation documents.
Yes, sir. The attached evaluation tool for the Director of Schools for 2022, 2023 is being presented for approval. This tool was created in consultation with the board chair using TSBA's recommended documents. I have highlighted changes from last year's tool in red. There are three segments to the evaluation. Appendix A is a survey that's completed by school principals and the district's senior leadership team. Appendix B is the board's observational data completed by school board members. And Appendix C is a quantitative section aligned to the board's goals and student achievement. This section is the one that's been updated the most since last year to reflect a few changes. Relating to student performance, we have better written those objectives so that they align with reporting language directly from the Department of Education, so that we can take directly what the Department of Education sends us and immediately translate that into a score. And for Performance Objective 3, we have selected items specifically from the district's five-year strategic plan, covering each of the primary goals. So, there are a few objectives there that relate to our known goal, our safe goal, and our challenge goal. And of course, the empowered goal is covered in the academic data. So, those are the primary changes that Mr. Campbell and I made when we reviewed this. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Campbell.
All right, sir. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the evaluation tool for our director?
So moved. I took my, I took a slow walk through this this afternoon and reviewed it again. And I think the changes are really very good. So, I appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion? And do we have a second?
I want to second it with some of the same comments. I'm really grateful.
Any other question or comment? I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, board committees' assignments.
Yes, sir. Board Policy 1.300 states the chair of the board will be responsible for the appointment of board members to various committee. And this was the list Chairman Campbell, you provided to us. That's been provided in the packet.
We have a motion to approve the committee assignments.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Now, any question or comment? And let me say, I appreciate each one of you working with us in getting these assignments made. And I think everybody will, is anxious to serve on the portions of the committees that you have volunteered to do so. All right, with a motion and a second, no comment. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I say none. Thank you. Accounts payable.
Yes, sir. We are requesting board approval of the internal schools fund's outstanding accounts payable totaling $21,465.33 at June 30th, 2022. Section 5 of the Tennessee Internal School Uniform Accounting Policy states that the local board must approve accounts payable that were not liquidated during the fiscal year. Accounts payable is an allowable accounting practice at the end of the year to properly recognize the expenses in the correct fiscal year for auditing purposes. You have an attached schedule of accounts payable that were dated in June but were not received until July, which is the new fiscal year. The accounts payables were paid in full by August 15th, 2022. And we are recommending approval.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the accounts payable?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment?
I just want to say that I'm so grateful that Kim is so smart. I don't, I don't know how you keep up with this stuff. This is mind-boggling. And I'm guessing this is like your thing. You love it. I mean, I've only seen you like out of this arena one other time and it was food. So, I'm guessing that food and numbers are your thing. Because who would think about this? This is just so much. So, thank you. Yeah, it's great.
That's why she is part of Murfreesboro City.
Oh, is that what it is?
It is so good.
She is excellent. Yeah. Yeah. Gosh.
All in favor of the approval of school-based accounts payable carried over from 21, 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Bus driver incentives.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As I've had conversations with several of you and as I'm sure you've seen on the news and coverage throughout the entire United States, we know there is a nationwide shortage of school bus drivers. And it is something that we are feeling here in Murfreesboro City as well. Currently, we are in need of an additional approximately five bus drivers to service our schools. And we are looking for any effort we can to help recruit some new bus drivers, but also retain the excellent bus drivers we have who are currently employed with us. And to help do this, we are proposing several incentives for the board's consideration. We would like to offer a $750 sign-on bonus to any new bus driver, which would be payable after three months of active employment or the last day of school, whichever comes first. In addition, we would like to give a $300 retention bonus to our current bus drivers each semester of active employment payable in January and June. If a bus driver were to If a bus driver were to start employment after the school year begins, which we are hoping some of these will, the bonus will be pro-rated accordingly. And finally, to really help get the word out and to offer something to all of our employees, we would also like to recommend a $150 referral bonus to any MCS employee who refer, whose referral results in a hired bus driver who stays actively employed with MCS for at least three months. You will notice we are not proceeding with a budget amendment with this current recommendation, and we're actually waiting on that because obviously due to driver shortages, we are anticipating that savings in that line item will help cover a majority of this bonus. But that's something we'll be watching, and if we see we do need to do a budget amendment, we'll do one accordingly. Our hope, our primary hope is that our incentives will encourage new bus drivers to join while, of course, keeping our current bus drivers onboard so we can safely transport our students each day. I will say from a numbers perspective, just to kind of give you some information, we look at numbers a lot in the office, and for a reference, right now, we are down bus drivers from where we are last year. But as for August, we currently have 600 more students riding a bus in August of this year than we had August of last year. So that's over six busloads of students right there. So you can see the demand is up and our driver shortage is down a little bit, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have a motion to approve the bus driver incentives?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settle. Now, question or comment? Yes, sir.
New bus drivers, do we give them training, or they come to us already trained? How does this work?
Both. So if you're already trained, we'll take you. If not, we will provide the training for our new bus drivers and then also help them get the tests they need to certify. So we do all that training ourselves.
And they would still qualify for the $700 sign-on bonus?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Moore?
How are we getting by right now? Because it's not like an optional thing.
That's correct. Great question. So I appreciate you asking. Right now, we're doing quite a bit doubling the routes, which means a school that would, historically, a bus would go by one time, pick up students, and take it those students to school. What we're doing right now is we're doubling. So we have, they're running part of the route, taking them to school, and then going back and doing a second route. So whereas a bus driver may do a route for scales and then go to Black Box and do a route for Black Box, right now, they're doing two routes for scales, two routes for Black Box. I will tell you, our school principals, of course, are stepping up to help make sure because students are arriving earlier than normal. Our ESP is stepping up to helping make sure that students who arrive earlier are being cared for, and we really appreciate that. It's really been kind of all hands on deck. I also want to say, you know, we, we have an excellent supervisor in Mr. Rome, who is our transportation supervisor. Right now, both he and his assistant supervisor are driving buses every day, and they're driving routes. So again, I think that just shows the commitment that even from a supervisory level, that they're on the road every day, making sure those routes are done. So currently, right now, we have 11 drivers who are doubling routes in the morning, and we have 13 drivers who are doubling routes in the afternoon.
Do we have any drivers that we know of in training?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We do have a few that, of course, we also hire bus aides in our district to help with that, which again, I think is a great perk that a lot of districts don't offer, and, and what that does is allow our bus drivers to truly focus on driving and, and not, you know, maybe students who are a little excited after, you know, cupcakes for a birthday party or something. So, so we do have a couple of our aides who are currently going through that process, and so I think Mr. Ringstaff, I'll refer, do we have three? Yes, sir. We have three currently that will be coming on. I will say, we, we're saying we need about five. That is truly a bare minimum. That would get us from about, right now, we're running 33 routes a day, so that would take us up to 37, and in ideal world, we would be able to run 40.
Those bus driver aides, now, do they continue as an aide throughout the school day, or they only for buses?
They are on the same schedule as our school bus drivers are, so they just work as a bus aide.
Mr. Settles?
Do, where do we advertise this? Not all the regular channels?
Yes, and Ms. Trail has taken a big part of that. Specifically, if the board approves this tonight, we'll have a pretty big push tomorrow to let our community know that we are offering not only the training, but the sign-on and referral bonuses, and we'll be talking to our employees as well about the referral bonus, so they're as well.
Thank you.
Have we seen any of our retirees come back?
No, and actually, under the state law, the, the state law on the retirees to come back at full pay applies to teachers and bus drivers. So that kind of shows the, the situation of where we are as a statewide and a nation level on the importance of this. Currently, I don't think we have any retired bus drivers. Is that correct, Ms. Ringstaff?
I have a question. So do we have the bus aides on every single bus currently?
We do not have them on every bus. I can pull the exact number and send them. I think right now, we're sitting at 30, right, maybe 30 bus aides, so the majority of them have them, and what we do is, of course, we prioritize where those aides go. Is the bus going to be on the interstate for any portion of the time? Is there a certain situation on that bus that may require an extra set of hands? How long is the bus route? Some of our bus routes are not very long, and so those are ones that happen pretty quickly.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that our parents have stepped up as well as far as helping in transportation where it's...
Absolutely, they have. We, you know, and, and part of Ms. Trail's job is pretty much on a daily basis, I would say. Now, Ms. Trail, is that correct? She's making calls to parents and families, saying whether a bus is going to be a few minutes late, we're adjusting bus times. Our parents have been really understanding about that, and we'll continue to message our parents and say, as we continue to onboard, if you're in a situation where bringing your child to school is a possibility, that may be something families want to consider right now just for that consistency. We know that option's not for everyone, and that they rely on bus service. I'm a parent who's, who relies on bus service for my students, and so for my personal children, so we understand that. We're going to do everything we can to keep communication lines open, let parents know what we're going on, and we really appreciate the patience they've displayed with us.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Duke, do we know where that 600 number comes from? Is that a byproduct, excuse me, a byproduct of distance learning and growth, or where does that come from?
You know, during the two years of COVID, I think we had many parents who were choosing to avoid the school bus as a whole, which is understandable. So with our enrollment being pretty steady from where we ended last year, this just shows that we have more families choosing to elect bus service this year.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other question or comment? We have a motion to approve the bus driver incentives. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Resolution regarding third-grade retention.
Yes, sir. During the August 23rd MCS board meeting, the board requested a resolution be written to express the concerns with the implementation of the current third-grade retention requirement of the Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act, which goes into effect this year. Ms. Taylor has worked on this, and with input from the board, we are presenting the proposed resolution for approval. The resolution outlines many things, including the board's belief that retention decisions regarding children should not be made at the state level using a single piece of data, but should be made locally based on research informed by multiple data points and include parental and school-level input. The resolution does also emphasize the value that Murfreesboro City Schools places in the use of data and metrics, and that we as a district absolutely continue to prioritize literacy development of all of our students. And finally, the resolution makes it clear that our staff is willing and hopeful to engage in conversations and work with our local legislators to help identify solutions and area of improvement to make this legislation stronger and more appropriate for students.
I know there have been several systems who have proposed a resolution and have been sent, so I think this is very appropriate on our part. All right, do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settle. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Now, any other question or comment, Mr. Settles?
I want to say thank you to Dr. Duke for his input in contacting our legislators. We did get some information back. It was lackluster to me. It was not satisfying at all. I did understand some of the reasoning behind it. My difficulty with it is we seem to have put another barrier in the place or in the way of parents, because it was stated that, well, you know, there's a, you can always appeal, you know. You can always appeal, you can always appeal, and I know that that is part of the, the process. I just think we do our parents a disservice when we take decisions like this away from the officials that they've elected to run their schools and give it to the state. I just think that that's, that's bad business. We, like I said, I know there's an appeals process, but we're just putting more and more, you know, hurdles in front of our parents to come to the same resolution. So thank you, Dr. Duke, for speaking up on behalf of our school board and to our legislators. I appreciate it.
And thanks to Elizabeth for drafting the resolution. Mr. Ballard?
Okay, how will this be transmitted to the, who gets it and how, I mean, how's it going to go?
Ms. Van Cleve will send it up to Capitol Hill.
So tomorrow, so when we call them to speak to them about our resolution, they'll know what we're talking about.
Yes, sir. I'll email it, and then I'll also mail it to our company.
Great, great. Thank you.
You, you said to our representatives, our legislative representatives, both senators in our... Okay. We have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
I think we already did that.
We already did that. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
I get mixed up. All in the opposition? There is none. Thank you.
We're just doubly sure about that.
We're definitely.
We are doubly sure.
Really sure about this.
All right, reports and information?
Absolutely.
State of schools report?
Yes, sir. I am excited tonight to present an overview of our district achievement data from this past year. I've presented pieces of this to the board as they've become unembargoed, but as of yesterday, all of our information is unembargoed, and we're excited to present and review this with you. I will say, at your desk tonight, you will have an overview of a lot of information that I will not be going through all of tonight. So I'm going to hit high points tonight, but I wanted you to have all of the data, all of the slides, so that if you have further questions, you can definitely reach out, and we will get those answered. So just know that some of the slides on my screen are going to go out of order from what's in your book. But to start with, I really think it's really important that we talk about the context of our data from last year, and I go back a little bit to tell the data story of even when I came to Murfreesboro City. I came to Murfreesboro City in 2019, 2020 with the opening of Salem. Of course, we know at the end of that year, in March of 2020, is when we sent our students home, when the pandemic first broke out, and they spent from March 13th through the end of the year at home. When they came back in 2020, 2021, we know that a very large percentage of our students were learning virtually. We were very blessed as a district that we continued to offer in-person learning from day one of that second year, when many districts across our state did not. But we always had that option for parents. But even still, at the end of that 2020, 2021 school year, we still had roughly 12% of our students at home. When we look at last year, 2122, I remember I had just been hired, and we had really said this would be our bounce back, and 2122 would be the year that we would be able to come back and really improve for some of the loss we saw the year before. What this data shows you first and foremost is that is not in reality what happened. We know last year, we were hit with several waves all the way through the year, specifically at the beginning of the fall and again at right after the holidays. And what you can see here is overall, when you look at last year, we had a 330% increase in the number of students who tested positive, and 141% increase in our employee positives from the year before. So there was a lot of talk about learning loss recovery, and I would say last year, we can look at last year specifically in Murfreesboro City and see that, in fact, our numbers were more significant than they had been any other year previously. So I think it's important we set that context as we look there. What we also know is, you know, we, we worked hard as a board to follow guidelines from the CDC. So for every one of these positive cases, and many times, there were other students going home and doing virtual school around them, which takes me to my next slide, which is our chronic absenteeism. This is a measure that we're held accountable for as a district. You can see at the end of the 2021 school year in red, 14.2% of our students were chronically absent. That means they missed more than 10% of the days they enrolled. Last year, that number went up, which is understandable when you consider a 330% increase in COVID cases, and that's, you know, telling families, like, we need you to go as we help control the spread of this so we can keep our schools open. So that took us up to a 15.6%. So obviously, that's an area that we are very focused on this year, is our chronic absenteeism, getting that number back down. We are feeling really good about that, but that is while that measure did go up. And so as I said, one of the first things we know is to learn, you have to have the opportunity to learn, and that opportunity to learn is being at school every day. And so that's a major focus for us, even from the instructional side this year. Any questions on chronic absenteeism or looking at the COVID data?
Just to clarify, so you can be chronically absent even if those are excused absences?
Yes, ma'am. So chronically absent, it refers to any absence that you're not in the building, so excused or unexcused.
So they've missed more than 18 days?
More than 10% of their enrolled days. I'll put it that way. So if, they look at how many days the student is enrolled, and if they miss more than 10%. So at your next meeting, Mr. Marlin will present the attendance report, and he always looks at chronic absenteeism, and what we know is, at the beginning of the year, that number seems high, because right now, 20 days we've been in school or 30 days. So if a student has missed three days, they're considered chronically absent. It becomes a higher bar as we go throughout the year.
One more question. So just to clarify, when we had students in home on quarantine last year, though, they got virtual instruction, right? So they weren't counted absent, right?
That is correct. If they participated in the virtual learning, they were. I will say, is one of the things we saw last year, specifically more than we had seen the previous two years, is with those last, the last surges we saw in that variant, our students were sick. They were going home, and it wasn't in the, maybe the first two years as we were first experiencing the pandemic, kids were getting, or students were getting, being diagnosed, and they were going home and still able to participate. That was not the case last year. When our students went home, they were in bed, and we wanted that to happen.
Okay.
But to clarify, if they logged onto virtual, they were counted present.
Thank you.
All right. I want to look specifically at our English Language Arts Achievement and our reading scores as we look at next year, as we look at this past year, and what this first screen provides you is really a snapshot of our ELA data, and you can see our proficiency ranking, our subgroup performance, which I'll talk about in just a minute, and then our proficiency over time. This is an area I am so proud of, and I am so excited about when I think about our ELA achievement. We know when we first started this work coming out of COVID, that this was an area we had to focus on, and we made a commitment, and we made a really strong stance that we were absolutely going to raise achievement scores in reading. And so when I look at this, I can see that last year, despite the fact that we had so many interruptions with COVID, our teachers worked incredibly hard implementing our high-quality instructional materials. Our instructional staff with Ms. Darty and Dr. Pressnell worked extremely hard with our teachers, and because of that, we saw a six-point gain, over a six-point gain in literacy last year, which wasn't only that gain, but also when we get to 40.2, those are the highest proficiency scores our district has seen since 2017 in ELA. And I say since 2017 because that is the year that the state standards changed, the rigor went up, the standards went up, we had a new test, so that was almost like a new baseline. And so for us to show those high proficiency scores in the midst of a really interrupted school year is something I'm extremely proud of and something that makes me very hopeful for the good work that's going on in our schools specifically around reading achievement. So you can see that, that does put us above the state average as well when you look at ELA achievement. When you look at our subgroup data, and that's the next slide, if you can find it in your packet, again, you have a few extra pages, when you look at our subgroup data, what you can see here on the screen is the blue bar at that 40.24, that is the all-students performance. So that's our proficiency rank you can just, we just talked about. The red bar represents where individual subgroups performed in relation to all students. So you can see here that it was our Asian subgroup and our white subgroup that performed the highest, and that our black, economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, English-language learners, and students with disabilities subgroup were the groups that fell below... learners and students with disability subgroup were the groups that fell below the all-students average, with that greatest gap being seen with our students with disabilities and with our economically disadvantaged. Now, with that gap, we continue to focus on that gap to ensure all students are striving toward proficiency. And I am excited to say in all of our subgroups, with the exception of students with disabilities, we did see an increase in their proficiency from the year before. So our all-students went up, our, um, all of our subgroups went up. The only subgroup that we saw a decrease was our students with disabilities, which also, if you look at our chronic absenteeism data by subgroup, you will see our students with disabilities was one of the highest, um, subgroups that missed last year. Now, with that being said, before we go on to math or take questions, I'm gonna ask Dr. George to come up. And it hit me when he came in here that I don't know if I formally in a board meeting been able to introduce Dr. George, who took over as our, uh, data assessment coordinator, who is doing an amazing job and, um, loves numbers almost as much as I do, which is nice. So we can go in rabbit holes sometimes. But, uh, that being said, uh, Dr. George has been working hard on disaggregating that and specifically with our students with disabilities, I didn't know if you could provide some context around that 9.4%, since that is that one subgroup that went down.
Right. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Um, I'm naturally a loud person, so I'm not sure how tall, how loud to talk in the mic, so just let me know if it's too loud. Specifically looking at our students with disability subgroup, even though we did see a regression in the number of students or percentage of students that were meeting or exceeding expectations, when we looked at the state data and looked where we compared as with, as far as Murfreesboro City goes, we still ranked in the 76th percentile of all districts within the state, so meaning that we're in the top 77, 76% of performance. So that does provide a little bit of context there. Um, and also with our other groups, when we look at accountability, we're held for the, for the subgroup of Black, Hispanic, Native Americans, they're all lumped into one group. Uh, we are also in the top 73% of all districts. So even though we are still not seeing those gaps close like we would want to, we still are outperforming a, a large majority of the state in ELA performance.
And I think that goes, cause you see that 9.4% and it is jarring and it's something we're not satisfied with. And, and I'm a big believer that the root of change is starting with a level of dissatisfaction and, and we did that with our literacy scores and we'll continue with our subgroup scores. We're not satisfied with that. But we also wanna recognize the incredibly hard work being done by our staff and to say, with 9.4%, we are still in the top, you know, 76th percentile of student, of subgroup with students with disabilities across the state, it says that we're still, what we're doing, um, is having an impact as well. But we definitely wanna see that increase.
Mr. Settles.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad you said that because I guess my question, and I know it's already happening, but I'm, just for everybody else, we're working on getting these scores up, right? These numbers. And what do we think, and I know nobody has a crystal ball, you know, to look into, and they don't really work anyway, just if y'all wanna know. Um, how long do we think it's gonna take for us? Cause there's some learning loss, we know that happened during COVID. And this, this is, and I don't wanna go back to my upset about the, the retention thing, but what, what are we expecting the time to be for some of these gaps to close some more? And I know we're throwing everything at, at it that we can. I know our team and our team is excellent. And I'm happy about the fact that we are above in a lot of, you know, with the state and all that. Still a little concerned with some of the, you know, subgroups not performing as well as we would like to. So my interest is keenly focused on how we get them, you know, do we provide more tutoring? And I know we have that. What is it that we're looking at? I know that absenteeism certainly plays a big role in that. So I know that there are some things that have been put into place that are, are gonna be put into place. Maybe you can talk about that just a little bit.
Sure. Absolutely. We are, we are definitely, like I said, we, the board made an investment last year through the grant, through our tutoring program to hire the additional intervention, the additional EAs to help with tutoring as well as that. Lot of professional development for our staff, we continue to fund to help provide that. Um, I'll say specifically with ELA, both Dr. Pressnell and Ms. Darty are doing a, a new kind of round of professional development. Um, basically it's called Prepare to Teach and it's really about getting into that lesson and making sure that teachers have a lot of clarity on what the expectation is. And we're seeing a lot of good results from it and a lot of great feedback from teachers about this, about how to take our instructional materials that we know are research-based, we know are proven and make them usable day in, day out. So we're looking at our tutoring program, continue to focus on intervention, uh, continue to focus on professional development. I will say, to put it in context, and again, when we look at that, we do have subgroups performing below the average, which is, subgroups do have to perform. When we look at growth, actually our Black, African-American and Hispanic subgroups showed the largest ELA gains last year of any other subgroup. So we did see significant improvement there, um, with that, and we hope to continue to see that. Or we, I shouldn't say we hope, we will, because we will plan to make sure it happens, see continued improvement there.
Thank you for that.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so students with disabilities, are we talking about just learning disabilities or all disabilities?
So that would be all of our students that qualifies as a student with disability under Tennessee, uh, state law, which would be students with learning disabilities, students with autism, students with behavioral needs, students with, um, any, um, disability that's recognized and that we as a school system have put a plan in place to address. What it doesn't include would be students with characteristics dyslexia unless they actually have an IEP recognizing that as a learning disability. And I will say as well, and this, in Tennessee, intellectually gifted is actually included students with disabilities and they have an IEP, they are not included in this data. So students, this does not include, uh, students with intellectually gifted IEPs. Uh, I wanna give a snapshot of our math achievement, again, something that we're very proud of. Um, if you, it has an orange header if you're making your way through the book. Uh, when you, again, the same snapp, snapshot of our math data, 43.1% of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations in math, which is an increase from the previous year. And I'll draw your attention to the line graph on the right of your page and the slide. And I always go back and look at that 53. Um, that was, uh, back in 2019, prior to COVID, when we had done some really substantial work and continued to substantial work on math and really saw a 10-point gain in math that year. And you may remember that, um, we had, I think, seven of our, or maybe nine of our 12, or 12 schools at the time were reward schools based largely on that math gains and we were very proud of that. Um, what we also know is not just in Murfreesboro City, but across the nation, math was what was significantly impacted by COVID and learning loss and absenteeism in school. And across the state and across the nation, we saw huge decreases in math from that interrupted schooling experience, which, um, our math teachers would say, of course it does, because we know it builds every day on those skills and when it's interrupted, missing a prior skill makes it incredibly difficult to master the, um, other skills. So we did see that increase this year. Our goal remains the same, which is we wanna get to that pre-pandemic level and beyond very quickly. Um, we were hoping to do that last year, um, that was the goal, and of course, we got hit with the large COVID increases in student absences we saw. I do wanna point out with that 3.1% gain, that is an increase in proficiency, but that puts us at, when compared to the state, at 13 percentage points higher than the state of Tennessee in math. So we saw gains and on average, we are outperforming the state by 13 percentage points. So that's something we're really proud of. So our goal is to again, get that, continue to increase, but it shows where our performance is as a whole in math. Same with the subgroup data, uh, I wanna point out the subgroup data for, um, math, just like we do with ELA, you'll see a lot of really similar patterns here, um, including that we saw increases in every subgroup across the board. Um, when we look at our math proficiency, uh, we see where the same subgroups that were above the average in ELA are above the average in math. Um, and we'll also see a similar situation in math as we saw with ELA, that our students with disabilities was the one subgroup that did not, um, improve last year over the previous year. And that goes from chronic absenteeism being worse to not seeing the gains in ELA in math. And similarly, I'm gonna ask Mr. George to come up again and again, give us a little bit of context around our math scores.
First of all, as a district, when you look at how we finished as far as compared to other districts in the state, we finished 28th out of 142 districts. So that 43.1 puts us in the top 80% for our math proficiency rating. So I think that that is a lot of context that we can add there. All of our subgroups, beginning with our BHN subgroup, had, was in the top 79 percentile. So again, nearing that 80%. Um, the one that we talked about with ELA specifically, with our students with disabilities, they ranked in the 73rd percentile. So as you said, Mr. Settles, we still have a lot of work to do, but we are seeing the improvement and we are seeing where we are falling in relation to the state.
And similarly to ELA, it was our Black and African-American subgroup that showed the largest gains in math this year as well.
28 out of how many? I'm sorry. I should know how many. It's 142?
With, is it 142, Mr. George, Dr. George? With data. So there are 145 school districts in the state, 142 produced the data.
Gotcha.
Questions or comments on math? And just a few more. I'm gonna quickly look at science, just as a, one slide, just so you have this information. Um, science was not part of the accountability model. So science, when we look at what we were held accountable for, it was specifically for ELA and math. Um, you can see here in science, we are outperforming the state and our science proficiency mirrors very closely to our math proficiency, which is a trend we saw last year as well. I will tell you with all of the interruptions last year, this is an area that may have sacri, well, not may have, that did sacrifice some instructional time for ELA and math. When we were looking at making up lost time with students, when we were looking at students not being in the classroom and how do we maximize that, our teachers put a, a lot of focus on making sure ELA and math was covered first. So when we go through our goals and look at our goals and priorities for this year, we actually have a priority specifically around ensuring science is being taught every day in the classroom. Um, and again, that may seem kind of like a, uh, well, that doesn't seem like a, a very strong goal, but we know that after the last two years, we have sacrificed that for ELA and math and with the attendance being much better this year, us not dealing with as many student absences, we wanna make it a priority and make sure our teachers know our expectation is we're getting this instruction in every day and, uh, some of the habits that maybe we had during COVID, we are moving away from those. So, uh, still performing above the state with science and we're pleased with that.
One question.
Mr. Moore?
About social studies, do we even test it and?
I'm gonna call, uh, Dr. George up too. We do test it just in sixth grade, correct?
That is correct. Sixth grade is the only grade that takes it. And as we've been communicated to through the Department of Education, it looks like sixth-grade social studies will be all that we will give. It goes sixth through eighth and then they give EOCs, but we have zero timeline on when third through fifth-grade social studies will become tested again.
And it is not, just like science, social studies is not part of the accountability system either.
So does that mean it gets sacrificed as well in our daily?
No, and, and it doesn't. And that's something that we watch and Ms. Barch watches both science and social studies instruction as well, especially in our upper grades, many of those are departmentalizing now and doing the team teaching where one will teach math and science and the other one will teach sci, uh, social studies and ELA. So it absolutely is being taught. Um, we know it's being taught, um, but it's one area where that accountability is not Another area, you know, there's a lot I'm really excited about when we look at this data and I know, you know, numbers doesn't make everyone excited, it makes me excited. Uh, so we're seeing, I'm really proud to say, we have the highest ELA scores we've ever had as a district. I'm thrilled to say that we're outperforming the state by 13 percentage points in math and we saw a three-point gain specifically considering the disruptions we saw. The next piece I wanna point out, and I'm gonna ask Dr. George to come up, is our English Language Proficiency Assessment. And this is not TEN-ready, this is the assessment that is given in February just to our non-native English-speaking students, but it is part of our accountability protocol. And as you remember, there are four things that we're held accountable for, which is achievement, which we've just went over, chronic absenteeism, ALPA, or our English Language Proficiency Assessment, and T-VAS, or growth, which I'll hit in a minute. So Dr. George, I'm gonna ask you just to kinda talk us through the great things we saw with our ALPA assessment last year.
Yes, very excited to share this wonderful news and how we did with our ALPA scores. Um, first of all, I wanna draw our attention to that we saw a 26.7% increase in our ML learners, our multilingual learners this past year. So we went from 698 in 2021 to almost 900 at 885 in 2022. Um, with that being said, the state gives us as a district two targets for how many students meet their growth standard. So when you look at the ALPA assessment, it's do we exit kids? That's a yes or no. But then each student is put on a growth platform or a growth progression, and so they have to show X percentage of growth on their WEDA test from year one to year two. So the AMO that the state gave us was 43.8%, meaning that we needed 43.8% of our students to meet that growth standard and our double AMO was 47.5. As a district this year, we saw almost a 13.5% increase in students meeting their growth measure on the ALPA test. And so that's where that 53.5 that you see on that graph comes in, which means that almost more than half of our students met their growth standard for this past year. When we look at that percentage of 53.5% meeting their growth standard of all the districts that have public-facing data, we finished as Murfreesboro City, number 20 out of 102 districts that have public-facing data right now. So that's a, that's a big part of, of what we did this year and we saw that validation on WEDA. Uh, and we're expecting again this year that the state, because of what our AMOs will be set at, we're projecting that we're gonna be somewhere around a goal of 56 to 57% meeting that growth standard for the upcoming year. So if you have any questions about the ALPA assessment or data, I'll be glad to answer.
Mr. Moore?
Um, just to help me understand the AMOs, I've struggled with this for four years. So, so we had an AMO, so that's our target for the percentage of students who score?
That meet their growth.
That meet their goal, okay. So you said we had a, so there's also a double AMO?
Does that mean there was one level and you could double it? Yes, ma'am. So in accountability, when we look at that 4, 3, 2, 1 that a district can be given as far as a grade or maybe one year we'll have A, B, C, D when, when that happens, um, to get a three, the district has to meet that single measure. So we needed to meet that 43.8%. This year, had we got letter grades or when we look at our accountability, we actually met the double AMO for three out of our four historically served, uh, subgroups. So for our BHN, economically disadvantaged, NEL groups, we actually met the target for that subgroup that was double what the state set for our original goal. So that is a very, very big accomplishment.
And, and to point out, I think you said 20th in the state out of 108 with public-facing data. Um, and, and we really focused on that this past year. The board approved in the budget the year before, the hiring of an ESL facilitator to help coordinate. Um, I would, I would dare say we are seeing the fruits of that. Um, and I, I am, you know, it's, it's both sides of the coin. We are thrilled with such a high bar we hit, but we also know that means next year's bar is even higher and that's good. And, uh, we're working now to make sure we continue to hit that high bar as we continue to see, um, our number of English language learners increase in the district.
Thank you.
The last piece and the final piece I wanna look at is our T-VAS growth scores. Now, I do wanna be real clear and say, I think T-VAS gets a lot of attention because it's the last piece of data that's released. And, um, but it is part of that overall system of a total piece of accountability. So as I say, you know, like we put in our resolution for third graders, we want to make sure that we're not putting something on a child based on one data point, but to look at a collection of assessments on that child. That's how we very much view T-VAS. We have achievement, we have chronic absenteeism, ALPA, and T-VAS as a piece of that growth. Um, and before we look at that, I do wanna review some of the information I've sent you over email. But as we've already stated, the State Department came out and said, um, right, actually, I think the day before they were supposed to give us letter grades and said, we're gonna halt and we're not gonna give letter grades this year to schools, which is the first year they were supposed to do that. And this is the statement that came out from the commissioner in that letter. She said, "The 2021 TCAP Assessment Administration reflected significant inconsistencies across the state. For example, almost 25% of schools eligible for accountability did not meet the standard 95% TCAP participation rate on which the accountability calculations heavily resolve, relied." And I'm gonna point to what I've bolded, and this is my bolding, not the commissioner. "That resulted in a data set that reflected disparate and inconsistent information across the state." If you, and as it says, "Which became clear as they implemented the accountability protocols." If you look at the second bullet, this is actually the T-VAS website where we go to to gather this data. They point out that the 2020-21 They point out that the 2020-21 and 2021-22 reporting might yield patterns between growth and student characteristics that are different from typical relationships. And this is, to kind of summarize that up, I say, there's a reason the state did not, they said, "We're not going to give letter grades this year." I mean, what we know is in 2020-21, the majority of districts across the state saw a significant decrease in scores. In Murfreesboro City, we saw a decrease in scores. Our scores went down post-COVID. If you remember, our T-VAS that year was actually a five. And I sat here and said in our retreats, one of the things I was proud of is that five, what it means is, because the question we got is, how did you get a five if your scores went back? And what we said is, basically what it meant is, we didn't fall as far behind as the rest of the state fell behind. So we fell a little bit, the rest of the state, the average, fell more. So when you look at that 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 for T-VAS, you get that by saying, what did, what was the state's average growth and how did your growth compare to the average? So last year, when so many had larger decreases than we did, we were celebrating that because our teachers worked really hard, and that resulted in our five. What we're seeing as we looked at the T-VAS data, and I think what these statements also indicate, is that because of the, the fall or the decrease, the large decrease, there is some definite inconsistencies as districts begin to rebound from that data. So when you look at our T-VAS data specifically, and this is for ELA, you will see we absolutely are really proud of the fact that we pulled a level five in both third and sixth grade. And I'm going to tell you, I am thrilled with our sixth grade scores. We have been celebrating sixth grade. They knocked it out of the park. They did a fantastic job in proficiency scores and all around, and that's, you see that there. What you will see here is, in fourth grade, too, we did meet that state growth standard as well. And fifth grade is where we fell slightly behind it. So you'll hear me say, this is where, where that growth data gets a little weird. We saw almost six-point gains, the largest ELA scores we've seen as a district. A lot of great things happening there, but when you compare our growth across the state, not proficiency, but growth, our growth did not measure what the state's growth was. And that's because, again, we didn't fall as far behind the year before. Questions on that? I know that's a kind of a, it's an interesting, I'll, I'll say that to say, you know, we're looking at this growth, we, we take all data and we say, what's our response to it? How are we going to respond to this? But we do want to point out, there is a reason the state is not giving letter grades this year.
So in essence, if last year's fifth grade was down, sixth grade was up, we would hope that we would have major increases in this year's sixth grade.
Yeah, absolutely. We will absolutely continue to push. We want to push for growth. And historically, you've always said, if you focus on growth, achievement will usually take care of itself. And so we focus on that growth piece this year because it's based on a formula. And I'll give you some data. If you look, the year before, 82 districts were level five the year before. Last year, that dropped down to 40. And of the 82 districts, over half of those districts, 46% moved to a level one and almost 10% moved to a level two. So you're looking at 60% of the previous year's level-five districts that went to a level one or a level two. So I think those are some of those inconsistencies that they may be looking at. And again, really to say that the data is, is still catching up to the pandemic impact. In math, this is where we did not see, again, we saw this impacted as well. Again, very, very proud of our sixth grade continuing to show that level five, which means they absolutely are outperforming the state growth. Third grade meeting that. And then in fourth and fifth math is an area where we saw growth. Let me be very clear, our proficiency rates increased. It did not increase at the rate that the state average did.
Because we weren't starting from as far of a fallen place.
Dr. George, you want to add to that?
Dr. George should just pull up-- Hey, you know, listen, breaking me in. What was your question? I didn't hear it all.
I just said, the reason we didn't see the growth at the rate of the, of the rest of the state is because, my understanding is, we weren't starting from as far of a fallen place in growth as maybe the rest of the--
Yeah, I think, I think that that's part of it. And then I think also going back to the, the comment that the commissioner said, where we had several districts that did not meet the 95% threshold, because that was the whole harmless year where they only required 80%, where if you look at Murfreesboro City, we tested 98% of our students. So, you know, we had more, we had more students in the, in the pot as far as that growth goes. But yes, I think when you look at that, I tell Dr. Duke all the time, it's like you're in a line. And some schools really, I mean, by virtue of taking the test, or districts by having more students test, improved their place in line, whereas ours, where we had maintained and improved our place in line the previous year with that five, we just didn't see that that--
That's what I'm, yeah.
And again, I echo from, from my position on the data. You know, it was very interesting that the state decided not to give letter grades, and that was right after the release of this growth data. So when you look at the, when you just look at all of the variables that come into it, again, we are looking at it, I'm, I'm meeting with every school, and we're looking at T-VAS and growth and how to better understand it. But we, we do have a plan, and like Dr. Duke said, we are responding.
I think, you know, it's, and that's with that T-VAS data, it's called growth data, but I want to be very clear, we grew. We grew significantly in our proficiency. And we grew and we continue to outperform the state. And, and we're excited about that and we're proud about that. And our hope and our belief and our plan very much is, as every district begins to get back to normalcy with last year, that we will very quickly recover to be, to have that growth data show that as well, while we continue to increase proficiency in all of our subjects. The last slide I have is just a summary slide, which is our successes and strengths. I am so proud to say that once again, despite that graph, despite the T-VAS data, we were once again named an advancing school district in the state of Tennessee. This is the second year in a row we've been named advancing. So throughout the pandemic, we've had that. That's the fourth highest category you can be, the highest being exemplary. Of course, incredibly strong increase in ELA scores, strong math scores that significantly outperformed the state average. Very proud of our ALPA scores, which are English language proficiency for both the scores and growth. I am pleased to say yesterday that Salem Elementary and Discovery School were both named as Tennessee Rewards Schools for Student Progress. So we are thrilled with that. And I know Mr. Rocha and Ms. Striebel happen to be our principals here tonight, but both Black Fox and Bradley, man, I am so proud of both of those schools, but they missed it by a tenth of a point. So, but you know what? I can't tell you, and when I, specifically, one of the things I'm so proud with Salem, Discovery, Black Fox, Bradley, all of our schools, but even in the midst of the pandemic, I will have to say, for both Bradley and Black Fox, and also Mitchell Nielsen, one of the things that really stands about those schools is they were looking at chronic absenteeism data from that first year of the pandemic. And we all were looking at it, but Mr. Rocha, Ms. Striebel, and Dr. Shields at Mitchell Nielsen made it a real focus last year. And even with those increases, all three of those schools decreased their chronic absenteeism numbers, and I am incredibly proud of that. So a lot of great things going with those successes. When we think about our areas to continue to focus, and this is the last slide I'll hit, as, and, and Dr. George has said it, I have said it, and I told our principals, we have a lot to celebrate this year. We also have a lot of things we can look at with the pandemic to say there's reasons why maybe our growth wasn't more. Our focus is less on why what happened, happened, good, bad, but how do we respond? How do we respond to the great ELA scores we saw? How do we respond to make sure our math growth continues to go and we continue to outperform the state? So these are our five kind of big focus areas for us as we continue our path to greatness, which is to continued growth in ELA to reach our five-year goal, which is 66% of our students at or above proficiency. We want to continue to make sure we're having growth in math to get back to those pre-pandemic levels. We want our proficiency growth in science to match the growth we're seeing in ELA and math, and that's very important for us. Continuing to look at our gaps specifically with English learners and students with disabilities to make sure we're closing those gaps. And then finally, and probably most important, is we got to get our students in school. So we're focusing on increasing attendance for all students and that opportunity to learn. So we've had a lot of conversations around the importance of attendance. So, Mr. Chairman and Board, there's a lot more slides in your packet. I wanted to provide that overview tonight. And again, I wanted to say thank you to our teachers, to our instructional staff, to everyone that worked so hard in our central office to help make, despite the incredible difficulties we saw last year, a lot of things to be really proud of in our data.
Thank you, sir. Any comment or question on the report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Duke, I can't thank you enough for being such a, a strong advocate for our city schools and such a great cheerleader for all the things that we've done as a Murfreesboro City School family. But I have to point out, it would be easy to distill or sugarcoat some of this data and, and focus on just the good things, but it's that stark and sober analysis of what we're doing on the ground that's the cornerstone of our ability to change it. And what, what you're doing and what you have done is saying to these subgroups and to the entire city school system is that we see you and that we're working hard for you and with you. And I very much personally appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Wonderful report. All right, insurance update?
Yes, sir. Just two or quick updates for tonight. I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. I, again, I know I've emailed you this, but I wanted to make sure I could take any questions around this. On October 1st, our open enrollment for medical, dental, and vision insurance will start for the 2023 school year. In your packet are several documents that list the new premiums, as well as the changes to plans that have been shared with our employees. As you're aware, Murfreesboro City is part of the State of Tennessee Health Insurance Plan. And in 2023, their rates will increase an average of 6%. We know that health insurance is an important part of the total compensation package we provide our employees, and we've made it a priority to look for ways to increase their monthly take-home pay to the greatest extent possible. And insurance is one of those ways we're looking to do that. I've had conversations one-on-one with several of you about asking us to look at our insurance rates, to see what we can do to better impact our teachers' take-home pay. So we took that to heart this year. I want to say thank you to Mr. Ringstaff and Ms. Hunsicker and his office, who really helped with this as well, as well as Ms. Williams, who really began to look at the budget in a way to say, what could we do to help do this for our employees? So the first step in achieving this was for us to look at what percentage, and could we take a larger portion of the insurance premiums for next year, beginning in January? We were able to do that, and the result of this is that 96% of our employees who currently take MCS insurance will actually see a decrease in their monthly insurance cost, despite the fact that 6%, despite the fact that the state insurance premiums are going up on average 6%. So we're really excited about that. We know, we based all of our calculations on what we are currently, have employed currently, right about 68% of our employees take our insurance, and those were the numbers we used to make those projections out of what it would cost us. So we know insurance is always a little bit of a estimation, as we know, we don't fully know who will enroll in October. So we obviously took that into consideration as well. So in addition to 96% of our employees seeing that reduction in their insurance premium if they stay on the same plan, we are proud that we can continue to offer a zero-cost plan as one of our employee-only options. So if you're an employee-only plan, you do have that zero-cost option. And we continue to offer the $1,500 a year yearly stipend if they do not need to be covered by our insurance. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from employees, obviously excited about this. I will say, we are already looking at what we can do in January when we start the budget process to present to the board in May or April, a new budget, something that will impact this even more. This year, we really focused on employee-only and the employee-child category, even though we did make reductions in the employee-spouse and employee-family. So next year, we want to really tackle those other two categories as well. And we're happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to provide that update to you.
Thank you, sir. All right, directors' update?
Yes, the only other update I have tonight is, we received several questions on enrollment data, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Marlin to quickly give the board an update on where we are with enrollment. There's been a lot of conversation about that, so I'm going to let him briefly talk about that.
Good evening, Board. I have just one piece of data for you, the, the enrollment information. At our next meeting, we'll do the full packet with, with the pupil teacher ratio and chronic absenteeism and truancy. The, if you look at the sheet that's provided for you there at your, at your seat, the total enrollment as of September the 9th, which was last Friday, was 9,340. And that's at the, on the green, call it a green row at the, on the far right-hand side, 9,340. If, when you look at the comparison in the top right, at the end of 2021-22, we had 9,420. So that's a net loss of about 80 students. But that's at the end of the year. So I did pull in one more piece of data that's not included there for you. But if we look at the same time last year, we had 9,349 students. So rather than the 80, if we're comparing apples and apples, we were only about nine students different. We expected to see some of that loss, and I'd be glad to explain some of that to you if you have any questions about that.
Do you recall what the numbers were on the first day of school?
I know we looked at it, and I just don't have that memorized my--
Nor do I.
I will say, I know between day 11, which we, we mantra it every day, between day 11 and whichever, whatever the date, day 11 of school was, I can't remember, and the 9th, we grew 66 students, like in a two-week period. So we're definitely seeing that. He did mention, you know, there were, some of this stuff was intentional, not intentional, but we did look at measures to say, what can we do to free up some space? So as we know, we paused those three preschool classrooms, that was 60 students. And I believe, I think we have about 109 fewer out-of-city waivers this year than last year.
See no questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business coming for this board tonight? Mr. Saddles?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to congratulate Mr. Bill Shacklet as the new Vice Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro. We have enjoyed him being an advocate for us and a liaison, a liaison. We're very proper and fancy here, to the city council. I think he has done an exemplary job, and I think his servant leadership mentality serves the city well. And I'm so grateful that you have been promoted to the position of Vice Mayor. We look forward to many great years under your leadership. We don't know if you get to continue as our liaison or not. We'd love to have that, but if not, it's been nice knowing--
I've been reassigned to this committee as well, so--
Good deal. Great. All right, anything else? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move if nobody else does.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
How'd we do, Lisa?
Maybe I'll hear about it all--